Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News producer Sidney Bowles, B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Chris Flaherty and Robert Paris, Elizabeth Fuller and Evan McNamee, Anthony Matos with sports, Peter Brown with the weather and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. Thank you for joining us. Burlington's local elections were held this past Saturday and the results have led to shakeups on major boards and committees. We'll get to that in a minute, but first, B News reporters were hard at work covering the big day and we bring you three of their stories now. First up, B News producer Sidney Bowles brings us the rundown of the results.
In a hotly contested moderator race, incumbent Bill Byer kept his seat over challenger Adam Sinessi, earning 2,055 votes to Sinessi's 1,413. In the select board race, newcomer Sarah Colley earned a seat on the board, garnering more votes than sitting select board member Joe Morandi and fellow challenger Brad Bond. Speaking with B News moments after her win was announced, Colley thanked those who came out to support her.
It feels wonderful. It feels great. I'm very happy with the results. You know, when I was asked throughout this campaign how I thought the results would end up, I said every single time, "I have no idea." And this sort of surpassed my expectations and I'm really happy and grateful to the Burlington community for coming out and voting. So just thank you.
Since there were two open select board seats this season, Joe Morandi will also keep his seat. In the school committee race, Megan Nowoiczek toppled former select board chair Martha Simon in a remarkably close race, winning by 1,796 to 1,706. And on a contested three-year housing authority seat, incumbent Eileen Sickler handily defeated sitting member Walter DeCoste, who had been appointed following a vacancy last year. And in contested town meeting seats, some newcomers joined in their various precincts, including Jamie Greitzer in precinct one and Sharon Laurie in precinct three. The full results are available on BcatTV.org or on the website of the Burlington Town Clerk. For B News Weekly, I'm Sidney Bowles.
It should be noted that turnout this election was at 21%, about five points higher than the last few years. And while 20% of adult voters turned out on Saturday, students were casting their unofficial ballots as well. Volunteer reporter Evan McNamee took a look.
At the recent town election held at Burlington High School on April 6th, while the adults are voting in their section of the gym, the students also voted in their own little corner.
Well, the student vote is always an exciting time. We've had a good number of kids come in, vote with their parents, and it's just fun to watch them learn the process. Everybody's excited about getting the new "I Voted" stickers that the students actually created. And so it's just been a wonderful day.
We asked student poll workers what it was like working at the polls that day.
I mean, it's kind of cool to like see the different kids that come and they like the ways they vote because like some of them are just like, "I don't know who any of these people are, so I'm just going to color in random circles." And then other people and then other little kids are like, "Oh, like I know that person. Like she's my neighbor. She's my friend."
I think it's pretty fun. Teaching the kids how to vote is also pretty fun.
Basically, you get to practice voting as anyone would normally do. You get to write in what you want to vote, and then we put it into a machine. And we basically just count the votes just to see how the students versus the adults vote.
We also spoke to some of the candidates who were campaigning outside that day on what they thought about the student vote.
I think it's a great thing. I think Amy Warfield, our town clerk, sets that up. Has been doing it for years and it's really important to help students understand how important it is to vote.
Oh, it's great that the kids of Burlington can participate and be able to make their choices.
I think the student vote is fantastic. It's our young people trying to get ahead, realize what this is all about. They come to know the candidates and then they vote their way.
I think it's really exciting that children are going to have the opportunity to learn about participating in the government process.
Well, I haven't heard any results, but I am always happy to have the students come out and vote and start to participate in this thing we call democracy.
For those of you who may be wondering about the results of the student election, the town moderator results were Bill Byer had 43 votes and Adam Sinessi had 42 votes. For the select board, Joe Morandi had 37 votes, Brad Bond had 32, and Sarah Colley had 64. And lastly, for the school committee vote, Martha Simon had 49 votes and Megan Nowoiczek had 41. We want to thank all the kids of Burlington for coming out today and voting, and we also want to thank the volunteers who worked at the student polls that day. From B News Weekly, I'm Evan McNamee.
And our final election story for you, Chris Flaherty took a look at those special stickers you may have gotten when you cast your ballot.
If residents went to the polls on Saturday, April 6th, they may have got one of three "I Voted" stickers unique to Burlington's local election. These stickers were designed by Burlington Elementary students and were selected in a town-wide contest earlier this year, which was organized by the Burlington Science Center and the Town Clerk's office.
My daughter lives in Atlanta and they have nice Georgia ones that have a peach on it. And so I kept thinking we should do something different, something unique. And then in New Hampshire last year, they actually did a contest with the kids. So somebody had shown me a couple of the winners and I thought, you know, we could do that. And I reached out to Sean and he came up with the contacts and I was thrilled. We had over 160 entries.
It's great to see so many kids trying their hand at something that is both creative and also civically engaged. So very happy.
The winning stickers were designed by Amelia Hopkins and Glenn Marshall of Francis Wyman and Violet Morinsey of Fox Hill. The students spoke on what inspired their designs.
I looked the picture of Burlington up and then I colored in it.
I thought if I'm going to make a sticker about voting, I should include something about the U.S., a national symbol or the flag, and also something from Burlington to represent my town and where I came from.
I just thought of the town center and what's in there because that's kind of what represents Burlington. And then I think of the sculpture park and the most kind of popular sculpture is the dog.
Town Clerk Amy Warfield spoke on the importance of engaging the next generation's participation in their community.
That's where I got involved as a kid was my parents were active in things and it just kind of kept my interest going as I got older. And I always was interested in things like that. And so I think it starts when you're really young.
Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty for B News Weekly.
Now, as I mentioned, there have been some shakeups in local government. Sarah Colley has joined the select board and Megan Nowoiczek has taken a seat on the school committee. Those boards also reorganized as they do each year. Joe Morandi, who just earned another three-year term on the select board, is now the chair of that body. And Mike Espo is the new select board vice chair. Those votes were unanimous. The school committee voted Christine Monaco in as its new chair in a three-to-two vote. Jeremy Brooks and Melissa Masado dissented. Masado said it was a custom for the previous year's vice chair to become chair, so she should have been the chair instead. The committee voted unanimously to keep Melissa Masado as vice chair for another year. The Burlington Select Board is pursuing a plan to provide community aggregated utility service to residents pending approval from the Mass Department of Public Utilities. Municipal aggregation is a program that allows towns and cities to offer cheaper utility service than private companies like Eversource by bundling the bargaining power of all the town's consumers. Mark Capodana, a consultant to Burlington on this issue, says residents can typically save about eight to 10% on their utility bills. Burlington first pursued municipal aggregation before the pandemic, but a backlog at the DPU meant the town's application has languished for years. But under new leadership, it seems likely that the process could move forward much faster. The town administration hopes to begin to offer the service by next winter. For the 13th time, Burlington is submitting a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority to repair or replace the high school. School Committee Vice Chair Melissa Masado said it's not likely to be a successful application because Burlington is already working with the MSBA on replacing Fox Hill Elementary School.
I appreciate the sentiment of we have nothing to lose here, so I'm not against submitting it. But I think I just wanted to set the expectation even further that the MSBA states that Fox Hill is our priority in their system and they only have one priority. So it's a longer-than-long shot, but I do appreciate we toss it in there in case there only one school applies.
After the last denial, Burlington decided to go ahead and pursue redevelopment without state support. The High School Building Committee is currently working on a feasibility study and is conducting focus groups on how the future high schools should function, as well as architectural and geological surveys of the current site. If the high school does enter the MSBA program, Burlington could be reimbursed for some of its costs and would get some state aid for a new or renovated building. It felt like all anyone was talking about this week was the solar eclipse that passed over Burlington. B News producer Sidney Bowles paid a visit to an eclipse viewing party put on by the Burlington Science Center.
Happy Easter!
It was all eyes on the sky Monday afternoon as the moon slowly blocked out around 90% of the sun's light.
I mean, how can you not be excited? It's a solar eclipse. We have a solar eclipse party here in Burlington. It's Burlington, Massachusetts. It's not the total, but we're going to have a great time today no matter what.
The Burlington Science Center hosted activities like tracking the changes in temperature as the moon slowly eclipsed the sun.
Yeah, so you're seeing the moon getting in the way of the sun. You can see it being kind of bitten off here. And right there in the center, you can see a sunspot, which is an area of lower temperature on the surface of the sun.
Events like these are moments when we acknowledge the common humanity in one another and like sort of our existence on this planet that is just hurtling through space, right? You don't get that experience every day until you have something like this, you know, where you're really seeing physical forces at work.
So I'm just basically, I hope they get excited and inspired about the world of science. To me, it's magic.
As the peak of the eclipse approached, a reverent silence fell over the crowd.
There has been a quite a bit of drop in temperature. It is getting very, very windy all of a sudden. There really wasn't a breeze up until now. And although it hasn't, the light hasn't diminished a ton, you can definitely tell that it has lightened a little bit here and gotten a little bit darker as we go into this partial coverage.
The verdict was, the whole thing was pretty cool.
It looked like a half-eaten apple, but it didn't really look like that.
I think it's pretty cool how like suddenly like it looks like the moon is like taking over the sun.
It was like only like a, the moon was infecting the sun technically. The moon like ate the whole sun and then it made like a sea.
It feels like the end of humanity.
It was kind of getting chillier, but like the sun looked so warm when you look in the glasses.
It was my favorite part when it was like totally full and also it started to be like kind of shade on the ground. So it was really exciting when it like the total eclipse happened.
For B News, I'm Sidney Bowles.
Thank God humanity made through it. This Monday is of course Patriots Day, also known as Marathon Monday, when thousands of athletes descend on the Boston area for one of the world's most prestigious marathons. Among those runners will be a husband and wife duo from right here in Burlington. Volunteer reporter Elizabeth Fuller has this story.
Laced up and ready to hit the race course, Burlington residents Courtney and Ryan Fine are gearing up for their 10th consecutive Boston Marathon and running on behalf of the Mass General Hospital Pediatric Cancer Team.
So we're passionate about giving back to MGH because they were there for us when we needed them the most. And we're passionate about helping kids and families that are in need. And all the money raised by the marathon team helps in that entire situation, the family and the kids. So we're passionate about giving back.
Our journey began 10 years ago. Sometimes Ryan and I run together. Sometimes we take turns. This year, we're fortunate enough for both of us to be running. We are running on behalf of a patient partner this year. The money that we raise goes towards child support services, but also research initiatives. And our team raises over a million dollars each year. We started off our fundraising with a yoga class. We do a lot of community outreach through social media. And we paired up this year with Suzanne's Dance Connection. Children from the dance studio danced. Family, friends came out to support us with a lot of raffle and silent auction items, which helped us raise a lot of money for Mass General.
Our fundraising goal this year is to raise $20,000. We're very close to that. Over the past 10 years, we've raised over $100,000 for Mass General Pediatric Cancer.
Behind the scenes, we could absolutely not do any of this without the support of our family and friends, but especially our three daughters. So each year, they show up at mile 20 to not just cheer us on, but run a lemonade stand where all those proceeds go directly to MGH. Honestly, it's a family effort. Couldn't do it without all five of us being excited about raising these crucial funds.
Courtney and Ryan hope their entire marathon experience provides valuable life lessons.
Our biggest thing that we always say to the girls is, in order to grow, you have to invite in some discomfort. And it's taught perseverance, strength, resilience.
You always tell them you can do hard things if you put your mind to it. You know, when the mountain seems big, figure out a way to get over it.
Conquering the course for a decade, they look forward to the magic moments.
Without a doubt, the crown jewel for us is at mile 20, when it's the MGH cheer section where our kids are there, our friends, our family, all the MGH patient partners, parents, you know, doctors, nurses, and they're all cheering loud for you.
Beyond that, there's nothing like taking the right on here for left on Boylston and just hearing the hum of the crowd and seeing the finish line. And just, there's nothing like it.
The entire race is spectacular.
As they strive towards that finish line, there's still time to donate to their Give and Gain page. For B News, I'm Elizabeth Fuller.
When people bring things to the public library, it's usually books or video games or items they borrow to enjoy. But once a month, visitors traipse inside with lots and lots of food. Tad Stefanak brings us the story of the library's most unusual book club.
The Burlington Public Library is cooking up a very different and delicious kind of book club.
So whereas a normal book club, everyone reads the same book and discusses it, a cookbook club is a little different in that everyone peruses the same cookbook and picks something that jumps out to them and then brings it to the library and everyone discusses it and samples those recipes. This is an ongoing monthly, one of our monthly book clubs. We have a bunch of book clubs and this is the most unique of them in that it's food you're bringing instead of just discussion.
So this is the second one I've been to. I think there's been three so far. And we're having a lot of fun. Each month, there's a new cookbook that's selected. And then you can leaf through it and pick a recipe that you like. We've had a couple of great cookbooks. And it's fun to try some new things. Hopefully get better at cooking by practice and try some things, getting to meet new people, and talk about cooking and different things, different experiences.
So you don't even have to register. This is a drop-in first Friday of every month unless it's a holiday. We have the cookbooks at the circulation desk, so you can check in anytime before the session. And then you just kind of make the call like, which recipe do you want? It's okay if two people make the same thing. You try the different things and talk about maybe they did something different, added a different ingredient or seasoning or didn't add an ingredient or seasoning. And everyone gets to compare and it's a good time.
What I made today was a, I'd say souped-up chocolate chip cookie, a very large one. So it was fun making them and they were well received, which I was happy at the house as well as with the crew gang here.
If you are concerned about it, maybe you're not a chef, that's okay. You can try something. You can talk about the struggles or you can say, "Wow, that was actually easier than I expected it to be." Or you can just come and sample things. You don't have to bring a recipe. It's not a requirement. It's encouraged, but it's not a requirement.
And we're looking forward. We just got the new book for the next month. And so we thank the library for this opportunity. And there's a lot of other exciting opportunities coming, so we're looking forward to that. And we thank Bcat for coming today too, to you know, experience what we're experiencing and share it with other people in town.
From the Burlington Public Library, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
The Friends of the Burlington Library are hosting one of their semi-annual book sales this Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I had a chance to pop over earlier today. Let's take a look.
Okay, we're here at the library, Friends of the Library Book Sale, and we have Ann Petty, who's responsible for running this whole thing.
It's actually the biggest fundraiser of the year for the Friends. And we do a lot of support of all the children's programs, a lot of the adult programs that are coming in. And we've had some great programs lately. So the more we sell books, the more programs the library gets.
So tell us, what is the mission statement of the Friends?
Our basic intent is to support the library financially in ways that the town has not designated funds for. So the town does a lot of funding of the library, but we do special projects.
Yeah, so the Friends, you know, they really help us fund everything that would be additional beyond what the municipality provides us. So this previous year, you know, the Friends have donated over $20,000 to the library in order to deliver programs and services that we wouldn't be able to otherwise fund.
What percentage of increase have you had in programming outreach in the last three or four years?
We've doubled our numbers. It's been amazing seeing the response that we've had to our programming that we do.
This is Phil Gallagher at the Burlington Friends of the Burlington Library Book Sale Event. Back to me in the studio. 70 to 75% of teens get in some kind of car accident within their first year of driving. That's according to Dan Strollo, Executive Director of In Control Crash Prevention. That's a group that's partnering with the Burlington Police Department to offer crash prevention training for teens and adults. The program takes place at an airfield, luckily, and participants learn skills to get out of trouble like performing a panic stop from 60 miles an hour. To learn more, contact the BPD Traffic Division at 781-505-1940. And one more way to get involved, add the Burlington Health Fair to your calendar. On Saturday, May 11, the Board of Health is offering a fair jam-packed with all kinds of wellness classes, screenings and information. Take a CPR training, learn the Heimlich maneuver and take a demonstration in boxing or tai chi. The event will take place from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Burlington High School. And now let's turn to Anthony Matos for a look at sports.
Hey, everyone. I'm Anthony Matos in this weekly sports report. Girls softball is now 3-0 after a 9-2 win over Arlington on the eighth and a 12-0 win over Watertown on the 10th. Burlington will host Melrose on the 12th, as is taping. The game is still to be played. Burlington baseball won 6-5 over Arlington on the 8th, making it head coach Chris Pasoti's first win of his career. The wins kept coming with a 16-5 victory over Watertown on the 10th. The Devils are 2-1 and will be in Melrose on the 12th, as is taping. The game is still to be played. Girls lacrosse had a big 10-8 win over the Bedford Buccaneers on April 8th. Goals in the game were scored by Charlize Collins with three of them, Jill Gillis with two, Elizabeth Delory, Katelyn Tremblay, Alex Fowler, Charlotte Scola and Emma Steiner each had one goal. Burlington is now 2-1 this season after a 16-7 win over Arlington on the 10th. Collins had six goals, Gillis four, Fowler, Delory and Steiner had two goals each. Marion Condon with 20 saves in the net. Congrats. Boys lacrosse won its first game of the season down in Cohasset April 9th with a coast game of 9-8. The team did not have any breaks as they competed with Arlington at High End, the 10th at home. Burlington won the game in blowout fashion of 14-5, evening their record to 2-2. Girls and boys tennis both had victories against Watertown with the ladies winning their matches 4-1 and the boys 5-0. Singles winners for the girls were Mason Alongi, Sonali Patel. Doubles, Jules Piscatelli and Alessia Pedruzi, Phoenix Mahoney and Therese Kozinski. The teams continued into the win streak with Wakefield with a 3-2 win for the girls and a 4-1 win for the boys. Doubles winner in the girls' game were Mahoney and Kozinski, Alongi, Piscatelli and Pedruzi were also winners in their matches. As for the boys, Aditya Pathak, Rohan Parikh won in their singles matches and Andrew Pearl and Nathan Nguyen, Kristonian Abe Jumatt won in the doubles matches. B News sports reporter Robert Paris has these highlights of the girls' tennis meeting against Wakefield.
It was a very cloudy day at Rohannes Park when the Red Devils competed with Melrose High School. With multiple matches going on at the same time, Bcat turned our cameras on the singles matches between Mason Alongi of Burlington and Ava Paco of Melrose. Alongi swept Paco in the first game 6-0. Her opponent had four points in the second game, but in the end, Alongi won it 6-4. For second singles, we had Sonali Patel, who won her first game 6-1. Melrose won the second game 6-4. After two games, it was tied and a third game decided the winner, with Patel coming out on top 10-8. Sharia Patel competed in third singles, winning her matches 6-2 and 6-1. In the doubles matches, Jules Piscatelli and Alessia Pedruzi won 6-4 in the first match and 6-3 in the second. Phoenix Mahoney and Therese Kozinski won 6-0 in the first and 6-4 in the second. Burlington improves to 3-1 this season and will face Wilmington on April 22nd.
The boys also swept Melrose 5-0 and improved 3-1 in the season. Singles winners were Pathak, Pearl and Soam Shah. Doubles winners were Parikh and Nguyen and Sony and Jumatt. The team will compete at home with North Andover on the 12th, as is taping. The match is still to be played. Girls and boys track begin their seasons on April 10th at Varsity Field with Melrose. The girls lost their opponent 80-51 while the boys won 87-49. A number of athletes qualified for the MIAA State Meets later on this season, including Krish Almeida, Ryan Brooks, Kevin Conti, Sean Cox, Charles Desmond, Dylan Giles, Colin Irwin, Cam Mattson, Alex Murray, Julian Saka, Leon Sakandi and Chris Williams. Sakandi qualified for nationals in the high jump at six feet. The girls are 0-1 and the boys are 1-0. Boys volleyball had back-to-back wins this past week, including 3-1 win over Belmont and a shutout against Somerville. On the 9th, the team lost 0-3 in the sets over Winchester, moving the record to 2-2. Burlington will be in Wakefield on April 11th, as is taping. The game is still to be played. On April 22nd, Burlington Unified Basketball will return to the Vanelle Gym against Melrose High School. For more daily action, go to BcatTV.org/sports and check out our Twitter page at B News Sports. It's all on air. I'm Anthony Matos, back to you guys in the studio.
We may finally see some sun and warmer weather this week. Let's turn to Peter Brown for a look at the forecast and stay tuned for your community calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Welcome everyone. This is Peter Brown with the Ocho Weather for next seven days. Here we are heading in towards the middle of April. I know it's hard to believe that we are almost a month into spring. It really is incredible how fast the time is going. Now, as we start our period on Friday, we should be seeing temperatures at this time of the year around 60. That's about where we're going to be. We're going to unfortunately be seeing there's chances of rain again here for most of the weekend. Nothing steady, I don't think, on Saturday and Sunday, but it looks like Friday's going to be pretty much a washout. Now, as we get in towards the end of next period, it looks like the towards the end of next school vacation week, it looks like we're going to be seeing temperatures going to be fairly pleasant. Temperatures probably up in the mid-60s, which is a little bit warmer than average for us. So that's some good news. And of course, as we head further into April and further into spring, our length of days keep getting longer and longer. So as you go ahead, let's take a look at what the Climate Prediction Center is calling for us in terms of temperatures and precipitation over the next seven to 10 days. Looking at our temperature map, they are calling for us to have a good chance of above-average temperatures. Again, we're going to have to see how that really pans out. We know that the last period, they were looking at that as well and it didn't get quite as incredibly warm as everyone thought it was going to be. So we have to keep an eye on that. I think we're going to be closer to maybe average highs for most of the next seven to 10 days. Looking at our precipitation map though, it looks like they're expecting us to have average precipitation. So not too dry, but also not too wet out there. So that's also some good news. So as we go ahead, let's take a look at those seven days of weather coming up. And again, starting our period on Friday, going through the whole weekend, it looks like it's going to be a little bit dicey out there, especially Friday. Friday, it's going to be pretty rainy, very windy, as we have a very warm southerly wind coming in here. Unfortunately, we're going to be having the clouds around, so our temperatures are going to struggle to get up near 60. After that storm passes by on Saturday, we're going to see a strong cold front pull through. We have some spotty showers as a weak low pressure center kind of sits over us again. Temperatures are going to be probably in the low to mid 50s for most of the weekend. Those shower chances are going to continue into Monday with temperatures creeping back up towards 60, back up near average. Thereafter, we're going to have another cold front come through the area on Tuesday probably. That's going to drop our temperatures back down again into the lower 50s. And therefore, it looks like by the time we get to Thursday, the sun is going to be out and the temperature is going to be in the low to mid 60s. So pretty pleasant as we round out next week. So everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather and have a great week.
Hi, I'm Amy Poehler and you're watching Bcat. Go Red Devils.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey and this is your community calendar. On April 16th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., the Lexington Historical Society is having a revolutionary scavenger hunt at the depot. For more information, go to the following website. On April 17th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m., the Burlington Public Library will be having a family movie showing. The movie they're showing is Migration. Snacks will be provided and outside lunches are welcome. On April 20th, from 6 to 8 p.m., the Made in Burlington store will be having a sip and pour candle making experience. For more information and to register, go to the following website. For more community calendar events, go to BcatTV.org, BurlingtonPublicLibrary.org and BurlingtonRecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey and that was your community calendar.
And as we do each week, we're finishing up with a photo sent in by a member of the community. Steve Moran is a frequent contributor of our featured photos and this week he sent us one in from his trip to Catches to catch the full solar eclipse. This is of Jesse Marie Riddle Elementary School in Plano. Thank you, Steve. If you have a photo you'd like to see featured here, email it to us at Bcat@BcatTV.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." subject line "Photo of the Week." Okay, don't forget to get over to the library for Good Books Cheap over the weekend with the Friends of the Library Book Sale. And remember this quote from Mark Twain, "Those who don't read have no advantage over those who can't read." That's the show for this week. Thanks for tuning in. I'm Phil Gallagher and I'll see you right here next week.